Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the special call session of the special call meeting, I should say, the Danville City Commission for Friday, December 13th, 2019. The hour is 12:01.
Two.
And I'll call us to order. No, it's not 12:01.
Two.
Now it's 12:01. No, it's still 12:01. Do I hear a motion that we move into executive session?
I will make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to KRS 618101F.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. We are in executive session.
I move we return to regular session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. We are in regular session. Counselor, you've got, you want me to go first, correct?
Yes, please, Mayor.
Okay. Because you've got, you've got a sequence here that is different than what you're indicating, but that's quite all right.
Well, I may have given you, the first motion I think would be appropriate to have would be upon the employment agreement.
Okay.
Given that, I move to approve the employment agreement to hire David A. Milron as city manager for the city of Danville effective January 15th, 2020, based upon the terms and conditions enumerated therein. Other words, the contract.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded and third as well. Any discussion?
It's been well discussed, and I think we made a good choice. I'm pretty sure the staff and the public will be very happy with this gentleman. It was a hard decision, but we feel good about, I feel good about it.
And the only reason I think it was a hard decision is because our consultants brought us excellent candidates.
Yes.
And we could have, we could have chosen any one of the three and, I think, been satisfied.
Call for the question.
Question's been called. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. It is with bittersweet feelings that I make the motion to accept the letter of the retirement of city manager Ron Scott, who has served the city with enthusiasm, dedication, and distinction, effective January 31, 2020. And I only make that motion because I know how much you're looking forward to retirement. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
I might comment that, I know everybody sees an overlap here, but that was a request. Actually, we asked our new city manager coming in if he would feel comfortable getting a handshake on this, and he said that would really be nice, give him some opportunity to know how things are running in this city with Ron's guidance, and so we were going to allow that to happen.
The role of city manager is not only is it difficult, if you stay in the game long enough, it becomes a no-win situation. Because to do the job correctly, you're going to have to say no to people. And if you're in it long enough, you're going to say no a lot. And so it kind of becomes a no-win situation. Ron has, with extreme grace, moved this city government forward administratively very The list of accomplishments over the last nine years are numerous, and I'm sure at some point we'll get into that. Sir, I wish you a, I wish you a good time on the farm.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Commission. I am looking forward to my, what is really my second retirement, end of January of 2020. At the same time, I do think we've made a lot of progress here with the commission being elected to serve three consecutive two-year terms and the stability in the mayor's office as well. We've had a great staff that is very hardworking, dedicated, and continue to work hard to make progress for all our citizens in the community. I too will say that I'm impressed with your city manager coming in, and I look forward to working with him in a smooth way or in a way to make administratively a smooth transition in the, for about two weeks towards the end of January when he arrives. So we want only the best for Danville going forward, and I think this arrangement will facilitate that.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Item four for today is...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have one other personnel action.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. You're correct. I'm sorry.
We discussed the recommended promotion in executive session, and I would like to recommend to you that Doug Simpson be promoted to the role of deputy chief with the Danville Fire Department. He's eminently qualified in his various roles, that he's served over 15 years of service with the Danville Fire Department, and that is our recommendation of both myself and the fire chief.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners Atkins and Terry. Discussion?
I think it was a good decision on your part, Ken. Known Doug for quite a while, and he's a good man, knows what he's doing.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Anything else, Mr. Scott?
No, sir. Not regarding personnel.
Okay. Ready to move right into item four, which would be the Danville-Bull County Parks and Rec participation agreement. I assume, Ms. Counselor Dexter, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the joint participation agreement that was developed and submitted to the county after your approval in November, I believe, or maybe earlier this month, there have been some collective thoughts that have been, we've been made aware of, that may be concerns of the court, and that we would expect to be topics of their consideration and comment or potential revisions after they hold a meeting on this matter this coming Monday. In lieu of having some forethought on those concerns and in light of the city's desire to cooperatively approach them in a manner that is both efficient and expedient, we have pre-answered, so to speak, some of those concerns, and they are before you today for consideration for adoption prior to the court's initial review, so as to provide more adequate assurances that the city wants to effectuate a positive cooperative partnership. And there, I'm going to hand these out to you now for us to review them.
Thank you. Where are the persons, huh?
Yeah. Looking around.
Where?
Okay.
So I'm going to, the document in front of you is essentially what you passed with some indicated changes, which are underlined, and I just, we're going to, essentially, there are about four or five items that we wish to revise or have you consider for revision, again, to hopefully make the document in a manner which is acceptable to the court. So going down the list, the first section you will see is under scope, and that is section three, which starts on page three, and it's underlined there towards the bottom of the page. Due to, there seemed to be a majority interest that the court would desire to start the joint participation effective July 1st as to January 1st, and due to the time of year which this change is being made, it seems that that is a reasonable request. And so the amended agreement before you shows that the term would begin January, excuse me, July 1st, 2020, so long as the date of actual execution by both parties is by January 31st. Meaning, we desire to have this agreed upon either by the end of this year or early January, and then have proper budgetary planning during the winter and spring for implementation July 1st. Seems reasonable.
Mr. Dexter, you want us to wait till you go through all four and do them all as a group?
That may be beneficial, or we can, I'll leave it to you.
Go all as a group, because we are. Okay. All right. Sounds good. Okay.
Okay. The next section, if you flip to page four, and it's under section six on the service cost and budget, it was indicated that the county wishes further assurances that the monies rendered are spent, not as discretionary funds, but actually in accordance with the agreement and not at any one individual's discretion. So as this is essentially a contract for participatory services, I added the language that the city shall be required to expend funds solely in accordance with this agreement, which clearly outlines the goals and objectives of the department and the programming and everything that's clearly outlined again. Again, this is meant to reassure the court that the monies expended will be for Parks and Recreation Services as contracted for in this document. Furthermore, there were some concerns that, of contingencies, meaning we know the lifespan of the Bunny Davis Pool is not long for this world possibly, as well as the Bunny Davis Center. And so the court wanted some recognition, and I think it's reasonable that in the event that the pool is closed, that their contribution will be decreased by the amount that they typically provide for the pool, which is $20,000. And also, in case the Bunny Davis Center itself ceases operation, to be reduced by $45,000, which is their annual contribution to that effort now. And then last, of course, no one foresees this happening, but just for the sake of clarity, in the event that Millennium Park were shut down, I think we'd have more issues than just this participation agreement. However, it's there for the balance of their contribution. Now, with that being said, in the event that either the pool or the Bunny Davis Center were ever closed, what would be most likely is that there would be potential other replacement services, at which time they would qualify as a special product, project, which would involve collaboration, disclosure, involvement with the court on that project to see if they wanted to participate. And as we discussed last time, there are methods in the agreement that tell us how to do that. So the project could be conceived, presented, the county could elect to participate, and if they do, we revise this document accordingly to the appropriate funding level. Should they decline to participate, then we talked about the metrics where we would have various fee structures for services that they did not contract for. Again, I think that's a fair request, and again, addresses potential concerns they have with the Bunny Davis Center. Next, I'd like for you to flip to page five in section, section 10, and this is a discussion about the hiring of the Parks and Recreation Director. Hearing that the fiscal court wanted additional input to the individual selected to serve in that process, it is, is recommended the following language, that the city shall provide adequate notice to the county of the hiring process, and that the county judge executive shall serve as a member of the actual hiring committee, which would allow the fiscal court a seat at the table in the selection of that individual to serve, again, the cooperative The next changes occur in section 12, beginning on page six, and that's talking about the Parks and Recreation Committee. I struck the word advisory from the committee, so it would simply be known as the Parks and Recreation Committee. That was done in an effort to indicate that there is an expectation of the city and county that that committee will serve to review policy matters, not only referred policy matters, but policy matters of their own initiative that could further the betterment of the department. So you will see, I didn't underline these throughout the rest of the acronym for the committee. We've had it P R A C, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, that's now been replaced with just P R C. And then if you look on page eight, under the purpose duties and responsibilities, we simply revised some of the language there to say that the committee is there to assist the director of Parks and Recreation on issues related to Parks and Recreation, including policy matters, and to take initiative in policies necessary for planning for the success of the department. Again, these are what I would consider minor, but make the document stronger in that it provides reassurances to the court and helps set a foundation of trust and cooperation that the city certainly hopes to achieve. And with that, with those few modifications, it's my understanding that the bulk of the concerns of the court and its members have been addressed. I'm happy to answer questions on those, but again, the goal was to pre-answer potential concerns that would allow a document to possibly be select, approved by the court at its earliest possible convenience.
Chair will accept a motion so that we can begin deliberation, should there be any.
I move to accept the suggested, recommended changes to this joint participation agreement for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. We are in discussion. I think you've done a great job, Stephen. I have two questions. On page four, where we talk about ceasing of operations of Bunny Davis and the reduction, does that reduction affect the, the initial amount of money that the county is contributing to Parks and Rec?
Only in the event that, again, this is a doomsday situation, but in the event that the Bunny Davis Center or pool closed and were not replaced with a special project for which the county did not participate in, then their contribution would be reduced. But that's only in the event that you close and don't present an alternate special project for the replacement of those services, and the county would choose not to participate.
Which frankly, from the feedback I've gotten, is a very likely outcome.
Well, you know, this is one of the reasons I don't, I tend not to enjoy putting bad contingencies in documents. We want to, we want this to be a document in which we aspire for certain cooperative goals and objectives.
Sure.
And then there are going to be issues which may or may not involve Bunny Davis Center that we can't foresee, but what we've done is tried to set up a system in which we can communicate cooperatively and then find a common solution and move forward. We have a dispute resolution section in the document itself for the parties to abide by in the event that there are issues that arise. But there could be creative solutions that none of us are even thinking about today because we don't know of.
Yeah.
That may come to fruition. I mean, you're referring to the construction of a new swimming pool or swimming facility, but what if there are other joint cooperative measures we would explore with, with other partners in conjunction with the county that could very well make it come to fruition?
And I appreciate all that, but what if it's not?
Well, then their contribution would be reduced. And frankly, if the city weren't doing anything else, then you would have reduced costs as well.
That's true. I think the flip side you already mentioned, too, if we, just as a hypothetical, that we decided to put a tennis complex on some of, one of our parks, and we asked the county to participate, then their fee annually would increase if they agreed to it.
Precisely.
Stephen, I have a question about, on page seven, letter D, titled Meetings. I've had conversations with a couple of people about this one, too. The P R C will have regularly scheduled monthly meetings. It's now says quarterly meetings. I'd like to bring to our attention, there might be a need to insert the word monthly to bring this committee in compliance with all the rest of the, most of the other city committees.
Have, have current members of Parks and Rec indicated that?
So what now?
Have current members of Parks and Rec indicated that need?
I would say yes, and then some not on the committee. Right.
My comment to that is, I mean, we can put whatever terminology is necessary there. This is meant to be a minimum.
Okay.
So in the event that a monthly meeting isn't necessary, why don't, this is saying we are going to, at a minimum, meet quarterly on these, on these issues. And should the need arise for more meetings, then they would certainly be permitted and possibly even encouraged.
Maybe, maybe we need to put the word minimum in there? I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I just think if, I just know in town, we try to have a special meeting, and it's, it's always about calendars. If I've got it down 12 times on the third Monday of every month at noon, it's regularly scheduled.
I would say that's a bylaw issue in the committee, and when the committee is, is formed under the auspices of the new ordinance, then should they select bylaws to meet monthly, then they could do so. This just says when the committee meets, they will have to meet at least quarterly to be in concert with this agreement, but the committee itself could choose to meet monthly. But what I don't like to do procedurally is require monthly meetings, they not meet, and then there'd be some perceived violation of ordinance.
I'd like to move up the page from that on item five, because we've talked about the, the role of the city manager is to execute policy. And on this, I see a bit of a conflict with the city manager being part of this group that executes policy. I would, not that I would want another meeting or need one, but I think it would be appropriate for the mayor or his designee to be a part of that policymaking board.
Well, number three names the judge executive and the mayor. Oh, those are their appointments, sorry.
And Mayor, I think we talked about this, this before. I think the development of, of policy is, is done by the Board of Commissioners through its city manager, but I would argue that the city manager is the very foundation of policy creation, and that it, it says designee, so it would leave it up to the city manager if someone else should be involved in that process. But I respectfully would argue that the city manager should be in that role as, as opposed to the judge executive, notwithstanding the fact that it's an open meeting and any of, any of the Board of Commissioners could attend.
And that's why you're an attorney, but I would respectfully argue...
I understand.
As a non-attorney, that in the policymaking issues, I have four other colleagues that sit up here, and perhaps they would have some ideas that they would like to see implemented in this board and represented there.
Which is precisely the argument for the selection of the city manager, because no one of you individually possess the authority to set policy, but you do collectively through your city manager.
That's correct. And, but you're developing policy here collectively.
You're, you're assisting the director in effectuating the roles and responsibilities determined by this agreement.
Policy.
And policy in and of itself would still have to come, I mean, policy changes would have to be considered before you anyway, and I argue that your city manager is the one who collects your individual intentions and helps formulate a policy that is tasteful to at least three of you.
But it's in the ex officio capacity.
Yeah. Yeah. So you said, give me some advice.
If you consider the duties of the Parks and Recreation Committee that begin on page eight and continue on the following page, those 16 duties, they're both advisory in terms of policy, but also administrative in terms of carrying out the functions of the committee. And the primary duty of the city manager is to implement the budget and to supervise all departments. Now, if you're barring the city manager from being an active participant in the advisory committee, you're reducing that ability to affect the performance of that department, in my opinion.
Yeah. And I tend to agree with that. I understand your concern, Mayor. However, I do think it's, it's not only most appropriate, but it's the best legal function of the city manager to serve in that role. And again, nothing prohibits your attendance at any of those meetings, which would be encouraged. But as far as from a schematic standpoint, I think it would be a misunderstanding of the law and the roles and responsibilities of the commission to have anyone but the city manager in that role.
I will respectfully disagree, and we'll just leave it at that.
So noted.
I think, I think the optics, I think the optics are, are difficult, but I'll leave it there.
So noted.
Well, and on page 7D about the quarterly meetings versus the monthly meetings, I've given the feedback to the commission, so I'd like to go ahead and call for the motion on the proposed changes to bring this document in compliance with the recommendations of our, of the fiscal court.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Hello?
Why do you got a motion going?
I restate that motion.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I thought we...
Oh, yeah, we've already made the motion. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We're in discussion.
Ready for vote?
I was calling for the question myself, yeah.
All right. Okay. All in favor of the motion? Stephen, you're looking confused. All in favor of the...
I didn't know if there was further discussion. That's all I was just saying.
No. He just called a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries.
With that successful passage, I will champion this document to the court for further consideration, knowing that these additional concerns have been addressed, and that hopefully they can be considered in time for their meeting on Monday and in a successful manner. I do want to offer that in the event that there are other matters that could be promptly solved, that the city or through its staff or in some capacity will be available to make any necessary changes on Monday, so as to allow passage by the court on Tuesday, if they are ready.
Right.
Should they not be, then we'll address them as, as necessary.
So if I hear you, you are prepared to attend their meeting on Monday and to be efficient with that debate?
No, I'm going to be available at their discretion or as needed to make any changes on Monday that may be asked and that are, again, in the spirit of what we discussed today.
So let me rephrase my question. Would it be efficient and beneficial for you to be there during their deliberation so that if there's something misinterpreted, you are there to make clear that interpretation?
I will make that available through the county attorney. Should he desire that I be there for that purpose, then I will attend. However, I'm not, have no expectation of attendance. I will also be available, maybe preferably by phone call, so as to allow them to debate the matter. And I don't want to have my presence stifle any communication on their part simply because of my presence.
And also, before you... You think your presence would stifle their communication?
Well, I don't know, but I don't want to give an appearance of such.
Before we move on, in lieu of the fact of them meeting Monday and the fact that you... we just made some adjustments today, at our next special call meeting, which is.
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? It might be at advisory when staff advertises about the special call meeting to put Parks and Rec agreement on there again, in case they give us some more stuff.
Sure, and, and we could do that, again, not being presumptive that they will act, but in case the timeline.
Yes.
Aligns.
Right. We're trying to get it all done if they're in agreement to it before the end of the year, so, but if not, we'll wait till the end of January.
I'd also like to comment that I appreciate the hard work you put on it. Mr. Dexter threw input, and two of those people need to be acknowledged because they're sitting here, and that would be the Director of Parks and Rec, John Bell, and Magistrate Gay. I think they've been really interested in making this go the right direction, and I appreciate you guys working on that.
Yeah, when you talk about collaborative effort, this is a wonderful example.
Yeah.
Well, it is, and it's also, I'm reminded of other kind of major moments we've had in the city and the county and when we've had such collaboration. And it feels as though another one of those special moments is brewing.
Yes.
Because the satisfaction professionally and publicly with you all is when we can achieve solutions to what I again consider some decade-old issues. And riding the ship is somewhat about putting us in a mechanism that allows us to be successful. Sometime friction is a result of format, and what we've tried to do is change the format in a manner that allows a larger spirit of cooperation and communication without the friction, and that, which is largely format. And so we are hopeful that the document presented allows the city and county to operate in an effective, accountable manner that in the end delivers an essential service to all citizens of Bull County and its visitors in a way that this community should.
And encourage the message to the court that we're excited about the suggested changes and look forward to hearing from them again.
A common thing that I've heard over the last five years is that the citizens of the city and the county want the city and the county to work together.
Yeah.
And, and move things forward. We're better when we do that. Anything else on that? Moving on to item five, downtown, implementing downtown safety improvements. I'm assuming Mr. Coffey is going to discuss that.
Yeah, I can do that. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We, in response to many of the conversations we have had over the last month and, and after debating the matter with the city manager, staff is offering to the commission the, an alternative that we've not yet discussed. And when we look at a streetscape project, we're, we're, it takes quite a bit of time. You have to design the project after, what we have traditionally done is been in receipt of a grant, then you go through the process of designing the project and getting the plans ready to bid and approve for construction through the transportation cabinet. That process takes 18 to 30 months, in our opinion, based on past experience. So then you would advertise and go to the construction. What staff is recommending, given that you've allocated matching funds in the event you are awarded a grant, the current fiscal year's budget, what staff is suggesting is to go ahead and proceed with the design process. We believe that you can have definitely preliminary design completed in six months, which aligns with other activities you have ongoing related to downtown activities. Then, once you have that, those plans developed, you can begin the process of having your, your street lighting approved, that could take a year. But by the time we get to a set of plans that are designed, completed, and approved, then, then we will have had an opportunity to seek additional money, seek the construction dollars, the balance of construction dollars that would be due anyway. And the only variance is really you're going to be ready to go to construction when you do get funding eventually. And so staff, given that you've already allocated the money, which usually ends up disproportionate to 50/50 anyway, which is your grants, streetscape grants, we usually end, end up spending more than 50%. Staff just felt like that after we talked about it at the city manager, there's no reason not to go ahead and start into the design process and, and start to take definitive action towards solutions to the problems downtown that, that have been discussed at length. And staff is offering that up for discussion and sit here ready to answer any questions you have. We've drafted a layout that, that is rudimentary, but it indicates the construction limits, which is your next phase for the audience. What we would talk about is beginning a streetscape project from the fourth street intersection where the old project that concluded the summer ended, and proceed all the way to the east down near Second Street where the granite curb takes off. But then also, we would address the traffic signals at the intersection of Second Street so that they all match.
What action would we need to take here?
As it, as it does not require budget amendment, I think simply your endorsement over the change of policy or practice we've had in the past, that we should begin now at the front end and with the goal of saving substantial time in the ultimate completion of the project.
Would anyone care to make a motion to that effect?
Would you agree today that you're going to spend the match money, that the transfer to be the match for the grant now? And the transfer match money, Larry?
That's that little voice in the back that always pops up here.
Well, and.
Money.
Money.
It's still, you know, you would have to go through a bid process where you're actually going to get your construction cost. Right now, it's an estimate anyway, so, so really, it's, it's the first step in any project's doing a design, and, and it ultimately reduces the time to implement the project. And I think that's becoming apparent, that we need to do, take some action to that end. Folks talk about many years in, between now and when the project would be implemented, and this begins the process immediately.
And that process would be getting bids from engineering firms to do the design work? Is that?
That is correct. The thing, what we would do is we would do an RFP through this holiday season. We would, we would draft that, those documents and have those published, and then in January, you would, you would have responses back from qualified engineering firms, and then we would set about the process of selecting the firm, and then you would hear again about that either the late, late in January or the first meeting in February, probably.
So is there not an overall design? Have we had to do the design work on each phase?
You have to do a detailed set of construction documents. So when we're, we're referring to a design, what we're talking about is development of construction documents for that phase. You have a master plan, which does, which is a concept plan, but you can't build on that. You have to have a set of construction documents to work out engineering details, which includes drainage and utility locations and other, including streetlight locations based on transportation requirements.
Can we get a motion on the floor?
What was the motion for again?
Authorizing, we request, staff is requesting that you authorize us to use the match funds that were currently designated in the event that you got a grant to spend those for the design of this phase project.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. We're in discussion.
Yeah, I got a couple more questions, but thank you for moving on that.
Yes, sir.
And you may have already addressed this, and I apologize, but would this be in any concert with what we're doing with the other project going on for downtown?
The downtown master plan project, yeah, Ron and I talked about that at length. The idea is that by the time you get your background research done, your, your surveys, your concept layouts for this, any information and feedback you would get from the downtown master plan process would be received and then would be implementable into the completion of these documents. So the timeframe actually works out pretty good, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And can we do anything? The streetlights belong to us, the city, even though the streetscape is a, is a state thing, based on the young lady's presentation Monday. Can we, are we able to move forward with any of that?
We will discuss, we, we have reached out to her, and we are hopefully meeting with her the first part of next week. Staff has, the, some of those questions are a little bit, some of those thoughts are a little bit misunderstood. We do have an issue with the capacity of the electrical system.
Yeah.
And so we'll review those with them. In addition to that, we've, we have had the transportation cabinet's lighting consultant make certain recommendations on some fixtures that we do think will support a different fixture, so we're looking at that already as an alternative, but, but they were correct in identifying some of those. So all of, all of those little details are going to be worked on while this process is underway.
And I would also add, this week, we did go and clean all the lenses and replace all the bulbs with LED bulbs in an effort to increase lighting, pedestrian lighting downtown.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think my fellow commissioners do. Safety's at the forefront of this whole, whole thing right now, so.
And with that said, the, the judge and I are planning our approach to the highest levels of state government to get funds as soon as possible. With that said, Earl, can you create a budget that would be a realistic number? So when we go to Frankfurt and ask, we, we have a number to ask for.
Yes, sir. We, we already have that developed, and we'll, we'll use that.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, I just want to make sure we don't lose the citizen input, excuse me, because it may be $10,000 spent next month, it may be $10,000 spent over the course of the next year, but that just, if there's any way some of that is realistic and it's going to improve downtown Danville, regardless of all this other stuff, we need to just go ahead and get on that. That would be very important to me, to see some changes. And if the, hearing what you just said, I was downtown last night and all that, I really couldn't see any changes, but I don't know.
Staff is proceeding with that in mind, trying, trying to make interim changes. We, we had began that process, begun that process with the transportation cabinet on the intersections, and we'll continue to do that.
And we, we, I have every faith in the fact that you guys are going to do that, and I just want to make sure that we, every time streetcape, street state, street, streetscape comes up and lighting comes up, we go back to the fact that, let's look at that proposal.
Any further comments? Seeing done, chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Seeing that there's no further business to come before this eventful, if not historic, meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's something else?
I don't, no, I was going to announce about our next meeting.
We were clarifying about the next meeting, Tuesday at 3:00. Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, like sign.